I'd like to call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Nope.
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson,
President.
Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shinier, and I do expect Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Ashby shortly, and Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening.
All right. Actually, I'd like to invite our retiring fire chief to deliver the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Chief White, will you come down and do us the honor, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Great job. Mr. City Attorney, is there any report out from closed session? No. All right. Let's get to public comment for items not on the agenda. Or do -- I don't think we have any special presentations.
We have no special presentations this evening, and I have 11 speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is Cynthia K. Spurling, then Maya Jones, and then Chris Rogers.
Right.
Cynthia? Cynthia, let's go to Maya Jones.
Ms. Jones, are you here?
Cynthia's there.
Okay.
We'll put Cynthia towards the end just so we can get to her. Oh, Cynthia, are you here? Come on down. Come on down. And then Ms. Jones.
I believe Maya wanted to pull her speaker slip.
He's back to you. Welcome.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm here on behalf of homeless seniors. This is the second time in one year that I've gotten a 60-day notice due to no fault of my own, but because this last one, the woman below me is 81, she owns the building, she has cancer for the fourth time, she needs a caretaker to move into where I am. After moving once before during this year, I don't have any money to move. I'm staying with a friend who's kind enough to let me sleep in one of her rooms. There is no help for people like me. My Social Security falls just above what allows me to get assistance. Senior housing takes anywhere from one to nine years on a waiting list. I'm disabled. I had to actually reach out to the community because there is no agency to help me. I went to Human Resource in my area. They informed me I had to go downtown. They didn't deal with seniors. So I'm trying to get a ride downtown. I don't have a car. I have difficulty walking. I have a heart condition. I brought my medication with me. That is -- those are the only drugs I take. I do not drink. I can't afford to, not with the other problems I have. In regards to help, there really isn't any.
Ms. Spurling.
I moved my stuff out.
Ms. Spurling, your time is up, but if you're able to stay for a little bit, we'll have a staff person come and speak with you to see what we can do to help.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next comment.
Our next speaker is Chris Rogers, then John Myers, and Eric Frame.
Hi. Good evening, Councilmembers. Tonight, I'd like to talk specifically about the drug addict situation that we have on the streets right now. I know that our police officers are really working hard to catch the dealers who are selling drugs directly to the addicts on the street, but they have a lot of issues also. They have a lot of other things that they have to deal with. But one of the big problems is that the police are just overwhelmed. They just have too much going on, and I think too much is being asked of them. They are being asked to do a lot of outreach with people, and when it comes to drug addicts, they're not really willing to accept services. I was just at a Cops &amp; Coffee last week on Tuesday, and we spoke with the police who were there, and they did talk about that. And they said, you know, it's easy to offer services to people who want them and to get them the help they need, but addicts are addicted, so they need a little more encouragement. And the problem is, is that police already have a full-time job, the full-time job of law enforcement, of enforcing the law, and supporting and protecting your community. We need people who are real professional, you know, mental health service people who are out on the street with the police, working with them, so the police can do their job and the mental health people can do their job. Because what's happening is, because they're not accepting services, they're ruining our streets, they're, you know, leaving messes everywhere that are dangerous for families and children to walk on. Quickly, here's some data. In the last six months, this is the activity that we had for narcotics. The theft activity and other related crimes are also in that same time period. You can see a rise in that. It would be really nice if we had a police law enforcement working with mental health professionals who can deal with consistent drug outreach, because they're two separate full-time jobs, and they both need as much care as we can possibly give them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is John Myers. Following Mr. Myers is Eric Frame.
Good evening, City Council. To follow on with what Chris just shared with you, right, we have a major problem. We live in Land Park and near Broadway and near the WX Freeway, and we're, you know, we're -- we have a homeless issue, which we need to do our best for, but we also have a major drug crime -- drug issue and a drug crime issue that we need to address, right? I mean, these are just recent images, just, you know, just walking around and driving around our neighborhood in recent weeks. I think the one on the top right is the 16th Street underpass, right? You know, is this what we want our city to be? And is this the right way to take care of these people, right? These people need help, right? And the resources that police are being used, being applied to things like this are taking away from, you know, homeless or potentially homeless that really could benefit from help as well. So I think we really need to hold ourselves accountable as a city and find a better way to be able to manage these situations. You know, we have lots of images, but I think the one that's most important to me is in the bottom right. I live near Broadway. My kids attend William Land Elementary, one of the finest Mandarin immersion programs in Northern California, right? It's a wonderful opportunity that we have inside our city, but to get my kids there, I got to take them through Thunderdome, right? Needles, feces, you know, people screaming, garbage, right? A real mess. The bottom right is after the city did a great job of coming in and cleaning up the 11th Street underpass, and this was a good day, right? If you drive through there right now, the sidewalk is impassable, right? We have a -- in the middle picture, we have a red tent. It took three weeks to get this red tent, right? And it looked like it was a heroin dealing operation going out of that red tent, right? Constant come and go, you know, people come in and out of there and dealing drugs and, you know, so we can do better than this, and let's work on that, okay?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Myers.
Our next speaker is Eric Frame, and then Jenny Remple. Mr. Frame?
I wish Mayor Steinberg were here. I was going to use a quote that I used last week. He said that things weren't happening fast enough. He admits that things aren't happening fast enough. I thought about that quote for a bit, and it seems to me like you guys need to stop what you're doing first and then go in the reverse direction, you know? I hate to see things going faster, because what we have is increased criminalization of the homeless. You should repeal the no camping ordinance. You should repeal the most recent anti-panhandling ordinance. That's a reverse policy. You should stop shutting down public bathrooms and stop shutting off public water fountains as well. Stop putting your efforts into another scam arena. We really don't need it, clearly. I don't see anyone coming in here and begging for an arena. I see a lot of people begging and begging for just affordable housing or public housing or some sort of compassion out of you guys. So what else? Stop ignoring the child trafficking issue going on in Sacramento. We're a hub of child trafficking, according to FBI. Clearly, we're a hub of drug trafficking as well, based on previous comments. So, I don't know, let's stop being negative and let's hire the homeless to pick up some trash. I've seen this in many cities work out. Let's provide porta-potties so we don't have urine all over our streets. Let's build affordable housing. Let's build public housing, because people have been dying out there, and we deserve public housing by now. Let's repeal the no camping ordinance once and for all, and let's use the police's time and resources that they'd have after repealing the camping ordinance and put them on the child trafficking investigation. All right? These are, you know, take them into account, please, and, you know, CERN, a while ago, promised 1,000 tiny homes, and we ended up with 68. So I hope we actually get 1,000. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Remple, and then Fago.
Hello. My name is Jenny Remple, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence in our community. Any actions that the city makes that use our tax dollars toward accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community it serves. As a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of the training's curriculum. Trainings should conclude with a test of understanding, and trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Our next speaker is Fago. Following Fago is Carly Brannon.
Hello again, once again, Council. I want to start off saying that not all homeless people that don't want to accept services from law enforcement officers are on drugs. Some of us have just had actually really messed up experiences with the hostilities that law enforcement are likely to use against us. Also, talking about how much money has been being talked about coming into Sacramento, we see a lot of it being talked about for the homeless, right? Yet, we see very little actual being done with this money so far. I want to propose that we start actually doing an audit on how much has been spent in the last two years on homelessness, down to every penny. I want to know every penny of what's being spent, how it's being spent, and with whom. Who's making money off of this? Because I guarantee, if we look hard enough, there's some people making way more money to do a lot less than they should be doing, or than their work is worth, I should say, which I've noticed happens to be a trend, especially since a lot of the development contracts that are going out nowadays are being done with the competitive bidding process being waived, and then they end up going to development companies that are often on the boards of these P bids. So I really would like to be interested in that, finding out what's going on, where this money is actually going. Who's doing the construction projects on this low-income housing? Who's doing the construction projects for the tiny homes? Who's the ones that are getting paid off of this? Especially considering that almost every single one of you, either you or your staff, are sitting on the boards of these P bids, which also have these developers on the boards. You know, I really want to make sure that there's honesty going on in this process. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Carly Brannon, and then Robert Copeland.
I'm Ms. Brannon.
Hello. My name is Carly Brannon, and I am a Sacramento resident. I am here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of their violence on our communities. Any actions that the city makes that are ordered, or that uses our tax dollars toward accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community it serves. As a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of the training's curriculum, unlike the CIT training that just recently happened. Training should conclude with a test of understanding. Trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training. What happened with the CIT training is unacceptable. It's unacceptable that you guys have said that you will review it afterwards to see if it's been helpful, because I can tell you that it has not. Police violence continues. You guys continue to talk about transparency and accountability. In March of last year, there was a delay in releasing videos of the shooting of Armani Lee, where Chief Louis said that unfortunately, the suspect, aka the victim, is still alive. That's not transparent. You guys said that you denied the waiver, but still gave them unlimited time. In April of last year, Mayor Steinberg provided awards to the cops who illegally detained Dejean Flannot, exacerbated the mental health emergency that he was experiencing, released him, suggested that a standby, or somebody standing by, hit him with a baseball bat to calm him down,
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Brannon.
and then hunted him down for sports.
Your time is up.
This is unacceptable. We need change now.
Please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Pastor Joan Louis Kennard.
Sacramento wants to spend a whole lot of money, get Amazon to get a second headquarters here in Sacramento. I can tell you why we didn't make the finals in that. One, we don't have enough housing to employ all the people, house all the people that are going to work there. Two, we got a rotten transportation system. Our teeth sucks. Why don't you do something about that? You're doing things backwards. Get the housing, get the better transportation. Them neighbors of businesses will come to Sacramento. You're doing things backwards. Use your brains. Do you know anything about economics? As Mac Woodley would say, as far as, as Fago's have an audit about how much money Sacramento's spending on the homeless, I'd like to see that audit myself. And now I'm going to do something more important than sit here at City Council. I'm going to get petitions signed to repeal Costa Hawkins and get rid of rent control here in California, then work on rent control in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Our next speaker is Pastor Joan Louis Kennard, and then Pastor Gainsborough.
Pastor, welcome.
Good morning, good evening. Vice Mayor, everyone. I will boycott Campbell Soup products. They have no recollection of my being sexually harassed in April and/or May of 1993, according to Don Sutton. Monies need to be given to me. I ask for a large amount. It will be used for legalization of prostitution, of course, my bills. It'll help stop homelessness, rape, incest, mentally, incest of mentally challenged adults, kids, little kids, sex trafficking, and non-consensual sex. I never asked before. Letter B for is a number. Holy Spirit, Holy Ghost, Great White Spirit, please boycott Campbell Soup products. Legalization of prostitution need to get started now. I'm glad there's rent control. In all 50 states, I hope there will be rent control. United States of America, worldwide in this territory, the world, the universe will be billion years old. U. Hipner said he didn't want to regret anything, the same I said to my Father God. Father, I don't want to regret anything. I need a sexual harassment lawyer. Oh, where is the lawyer? I need a sexual harassment lawyer. President Trump, be merciful to illegal aliens, especially everyone. Be merciful. You'll need mercy yourself. Car insurance is high. Oh, child, things are going to be easier. Ooh, child, things are going to be brighter. Got to work in the morning. Sorry, I can't stay.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, and then James Tan.
Pastor Gainsborough.
Vice Mayor and Council, good to see you. Last week when I spoke, I wanted to talk about the, a combination of words that I put together, a death toll goal. Can anybody in the room say that with me? Death toll goal?
Death toll goal.
A death toll goal. What am I talking about? Two years ago, we had 86 of the homeless die, which was about one and a half homeless people per week. This last year, we had 118. The increase was about 34 percent. That's all numbers. Let's make it your child. Let's make the death toll goal to cut the over 100 homeless deaths last year. Let's make a death toll goal, the City Council, to stand up with the mayor and openly say, we'd like to cut that homeless death in half to at least 50 in 2018. I know you can't speak back to me, but God is speaking to every one of you right now. That's your son. Oh, no, it's not your son, it's your daughter. No, you don't have children. It's your brother or your sister's child. No, it's your grandchild. No, it's some unknown person sleeping out there in the rain or the wind or the cold. Now, we need more housing. We need rent control. Yeah, I'm turning the heat up just a little bit, because you're all going to stand before God someday, and he's going to say, you had over 100 dead, and you were challenged to cut it in half. Will you take the challenge of the death toll goal to cut the deaths of homeless in Sacramento and make a mark nationally to cut it in half? I challenge you, in the name of decency, ask your wives and your partners if you should take that goal up, and they will say 100 percent. Take it up, come out, stand up like a man and a woman
Thank you, Pastor.
in Sacramento. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor.
Our next speaker is James Tan, and then Roxanne Fuentes.
My name is James Tan. Can I bring my property manager as well? Her name is Tammy.
Go ahead. Just, you have two minutes total.
Okay, I'm a property owner at Duplex at 5790 Tangerine Avenue in Sacramento, 95823. I believe that's District 8. And in November of 2017, I received a notice of alleged violation. It says that I have outdoor storage of junk and clear-view zone obstructions of the landscape. Now, I notified Tammy from Haven Properties, and she immediately notified the tenant. So the tenant said, well, you know, that shopping cart doesn't belong to me. So in December, I received another violation notice, and then I went to the property, and then I actually noticed that that shopping cart is no longer there. That was before the deadline of December the 21st. And then I also contacted my gardener to have the shrubs removed. However, my gardener was at that time in Mexico, and he's not able to do it until January, when he comes back. So...
Mr. Tan? We have the Community Development Director, Ryan DeVore, in the back. He's going to come out and talk to you, if you want, and help you with these issues.
He's in the middle of making his comments. Sure.
Yeah, you can keep going. I just wanted to let you know we're going to have staff come out and help you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to let you know, on the second week of January, I received another letter, and this time it's a fine of 575 plus 100 plus 150, which is a total of $825. Now, on top of that, if I want to go get a hearing, I have to pay $400. So if I go to a hearing and lost, that means I would have paid $1,225. Now, my revenues from that property is actually only 100 a month. So in other words, I have to pay nine months of rent to cover this. I mean, that's ridiculous to me. So, and then, so I called the code enforcement officer in January 27, and I asked, you know, there are hundreds of properties which have similar situation like mine. How come I got fined and they don't? And then they said, well, you know, we only respond on complaints. So it's elective enforcement, and it's exorbitant, and there is no right to appeal. So I just want to ask for leniency.
Mr. Tan, thank you. Your time is up, but Mr. DeVore is in the back to talk to you and see what we can do to help you.
All right. Before you leave, my dear...
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Could you give me the address again?
5790 Tangerine.
5790 Tangerine. Okay, someone in the back can help you.
All right, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Roxanne Fuentes, and then Ron Elmsley.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Fuentes. I live in Sacramento, and I just found out yesterday that a five-story apartment building is going to be built at 1325 65th Street at the former Jeremiah Pools Building site, and this was the first time I had heard about this project. Fran told me. I'd never received a letter from the City of Sacramento informing me, or for that matter, my neighbors of this proposed project. And we live on 64th Street, which is a stone's throw away from the proposed project, and we will be directly impacted by this project. And I understand that there has already been a hearing and subsequent approval for this project, and we were unable to come to it because we didn't know about it. And my neighbors and I should have been sent a letter informing us of the project in a timely manner so that we could have the opportunity to voice our concern about this project. We are a residential neighborhood in close proximity to the project, and five stories is too high right next to our neighborhood. It should be no higher than three stories, as the building is, as is the building built on the side of the old restaurant on Folsom Boulevard on the next street over. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but they have another building that they built, and it's only three stories nearby. And we will lose our privacy also. We don't want intrusive lights shining in our faces and in our yards and houses. And furthermore, this development will further impact the parking problem on our street. Even though we have permit parking until 6:00 p.m., there's still a problem. The people park all night, and we can't, we don't have a place to park. We are within 300 feet of the proposed project, so we should have been sent notices, so we were wondering why this wasn't done. Then we're also wondering why they changed the noticing area from 500 to 300 feet.
Ms. Fuentes, thank you for your comments. We got your phone number from your speaker slip, and the city manager has committed to have staff follow up with you.
Okay, and then could I ask you one more question?
I'm sorry, your time is up.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley, and then Jen Roger.
You were going to give some easy money to Amazon if they came to Sacramento, and you gave easy money to the arena. But for a person to build one residential unit, one house, in Sacramento, he has to come up with almost $20,000 to give to the city. So I think that you should balance that. And when you give all of this money to businesses to draw more people, that they have nowhere to lodge them, then I think you ought to give to the residential section. Let's see. Also, Mr. White came up here. Now, he came from SAC Metro. He's only been here something like three or four years. You know, that guy should have told you, or thanked you for his huge pension. He's probably getting, it's over $100,000 a month. So, you know, he's not grateful for what he got off the city. And then let's see. Oh, the United Nations gives refugee tents to refugees. I think that'd be a good idea. Maybe you could follow the United Nations. We have a lot of refugees. They're not political or religious. They're economic refugees. So if you followed the same logic, you know, wouldn't a tent be a lot better than spending than spending money for only a thousand people and then the rest of the homeless can go pound salt?
Elmsley, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next week.
Our next speaker is Jen Roger and then Armando.
Rogar.
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 Rogar is Spanish for to seek or to beg, or to plead, which I'm doing. Anyway, I'm a teacher and I'm reactivating after the loss of one of our best activists. It got me off my ass. Sorry for the language. There's a homeless guy that's camping out right where my apartment building is, the Eighteenth and V. I teach in the South Area in Larry Carr's district with kids that are social, emotional, depressed. They're trying to shut down my school, too. But we have a serious crisis with bipolar depression. These are kids. These are older people. They don't have a chance to get an apartment. There's no way they're gonna get an apartment, even if they have disability. This policy that has been since Reagan has to end. Where you just give them a check and you just expect them to take care of themselves. They're not in the driver's seat. So this city council should spend day and night thinking and coming up with a solution to get these people off the street and get, you know, the regional health facilities that Carter tried to do before Reagan came in and killed it. You know, there's a kid sleeping right by my apartment. He's my son's age. I know you have families. These are real people. They're not in the driver's seat, a lot of them. And if the ones that are in the driver's seat, who wanna be homeless, who've been homeless for twenty years, you gotta find a place for them. Find a spot out in, you know, out in the river that's their spot, a tent city, if you will. Because they're not all gonna come inside. They've been out too long. So there has to be a solution. My son says, "I trip over orange caps. I'm afraid to step on needles. I can't believe what I'm seeing." So this is the number-one job you have in the state of California. You are in the number-one state in the number-one country, in my opinion. You're the leaders, so...
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Rogar.
Our next speaker is Armando and then Fong.
Before I start, I would like to have a moment of silence for our friend Andy Khan. He passed over the weekend. And I will take probably my first minute just so that we can think about him. Thank you guys for sharing with us about Andy. He was one of the people that, like us, came in here week by week begging to you guys to repeal the anti-camping ordinance. There's too many people in the streets dying. There's too many people in the streets suffering. As we sit in our comfortable homes enjoying our televisions or whatever we do, there are thousands, over twelve thousand in our city, that are suffering. They need help. They need bathrooms they need to go to. They need hand washing stations so that they don't get sick from the pollution and bacteria that is in the areas where they're going to the bathroom on the street. We're walking around it pretending that it's not there, but it is there and we need to get rid of it. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fong. And then our final speaker tonight is Mac Elworthy.
We need to start paying attention to what's going on with everything around us. We asked for a financial audit, but I really think that it's time for us to have a spiritual audit. Look at what's going on around you. Look at the hurt and the pain. All the things that we are, week after week, come up here and ask for the same thing for people's lives. And are you not, are you not part of this humanity? And I'm sure you've seen what the UN report have said, that they have declared that this is a tragedy that's happening in America, especially in California. That this is a report, a statement by Professor Philip Alston. He talked about the extreme poverty and human rights violation. Why are we still here? Why are we still at this point after years after years of the same question? And we're coming around to summer again and we're still faced with the same problems. Diseases from not having a bathroom. People are, their gears are still being confiscated. They're dying. People are still losing their homes because they can't afford it. And I ask you every time to look at these things. This is a spiritual audit here.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Shame on you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthy.
Mac Worthy is our final speaker for matters not on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor. We want to remind you, this is Negro History Month. We don't say one thing here as a presentation, not nothing. This show you that all the black folks on the podium is paid slaves. Slave can't talk about his own kind. He gotta say what the masters say. Why couldn't there have been a presentation? How did the paid slaves get that? Somebody bought them. It's critical. Nineteen twenty-one, Oklahoma community of blacks was burned down. You don't hear a word about it, do you? Every time we turn around, we hear about the Holocaust. That wasn't a KKK. That was the city of Oklahoma burning that independent black neighborhood down. That is ridiculous. Why can't they raise it? Because they're bought slaves on the podium. We cannot move. Why don't you tell your mayor, "We can't make it off entertainment here"? Who paid for his trips to go back about the soccer? Who paid for his trips to go back about AMC? Did the taxpayers pay for that? We want to show there's some transparency that you ain't come back here with nothing. Why can't the black folks on the podium put something on their agenda? Why? You can't even build a tent. But yet still, they support everything else to go on here, which was the dialogue of putting them on there. The coin, five up and five down. That's the reason you got the three on here. That's the reason the Hispanic was talked about. The boundary change. They asked him, "Let it go until he get on board." But you changed it before because of who said change it? District five. It's critical, people. Wake up, it's coming. You can sit here and lie and lie, but the swamp will be drained.
Mr. Worthy, thank you for your comments. We'll see you next week. We are on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
I have two speakers on the consent calendar on item number three, Carly Brannon and Faygo.
And for the record, Councilmember Shanear has requested item six be removed.
So item six will be pulled for a separate discussion and item two will be pulled so we may take a separate vote so that Councilmember Warren can recuse himself. Ms. Brannon?
I wanna call everybody's attention to the definition of community-oriented policing. Community policing is a philosophy that promotes organizational strategies that support the systematic use of partnerships and problem-solving techniques to proactively address the immediate conditions that give rise to public safety issues, such as crime, social disorder, and fear of crime. Based on what we know of SAC PD, I cannot support giving more money to hire more officers. They murder too many people. They brutalize too many people. And the crisis intervention training that was supposed to happen to, you know, intervene in this crisis was botched from the beginning and y'all are refusing to even take a look at it. So I cannot support this. You need to stop the murdering. You need to stop the bleeding.
Thank you, Ms. Brannon.
Our next speaker is Faygo. Following Faygo is Roxanne Fuentes.
I too cannot support this. I'm seeing almost two million dollars, one point eight five if I remember correctly, a million dollars going into this community-oriented policing. When, if we were to actually take proactive steps like upraising members of our community to the point, to be more affluent within our communities, then we wouldn't have as much crime. It's about actual preventing the issues that give rise to crime. Help end poverty and help end homelessness. You know, take steps that will actually get people into positions where they're not making movements of desperation, where they're less likely to have trouble getting away from drugs or getting on drugs. You know, let's put them into situations through economic viability within the areas where these crimes are happening, rather than continuing to fund P-bids and more police. Because when you start pushing people out of their neighborhoods and keeping them impoverished and taxing them with more and more hefty fines and more fees and more jail time, you're really not doing anything to prevent crime. You're actually creating the recipe that causes more crime. I mean, I know you wanna keep your officers paid because, you know, strong communities don't really need as many police. So you've gotta make that decision, which is more important to you? Paying more cops that are out there killing in our streets and approaching people that are sleeping with their hands on their pistols? Or do you wanna actually build strong communities that actually can take care of theirselves and police themselves so that we don't need to waste money on things like officers? We could actually take, spend the money on a proper infrastructure that uplifts the people in our community instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
And our last speaker on the consent calendar is Roxanne Fuentes on item number four.
Hello, Roxanne Fuentes, Sacramento. Concerning the Ramona extension, this road is proposed to be built in a wetland area where there's many Pacific chorus frogs and swifts and swallows get mud from the area to build nests. And there's giant water bugs, ducks, rabbits, ground squirrels. Also deer come at night to this area. And I know they already planned this road, but I was just wondering if they're gonna leave some of the land right next to the, where they're gonna do that for the wildlife? Because there is a little patch of land there. And then also, along the spur track, there's a lot of frogs and ducks. If they could leave some of that area right up along the UP levee for the wildlife. So that was, those were my concerns, so...
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes. Thank you for coming. Do we have a motion for items one through eight minus number six? We have a motion from Mr. Carr, second from Mr. Garrett. Please note that Mr. Warren is recusing himself on item number two. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries unanimously. Item number six. Mr. Shanear?
Yeah, I was gonna ask our staff, Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, to come up and particularly in light of the kind of horrific accident that we had last week on Freeport Boulevard. I think this really is a critical piece for us as we move forward. And so I just wanna see if she can outline just a little bit of what we're doing here and then we can always answer questions later.
Ms. Donlin Wyatt?
Great, thank you. I think most of you know, but I'll outline what Vision Zero is. Vision Zero is a philosophy that traffic fatalities and serious injuries are preventable incidents. And it is a data-driven process to identify what is going on and then identify steps to improve that. The City of Sacramento has been working on our vision and action plan for about the last fourteen months. We formed a task force. We've been actually, over the last month, taking the draft Vision Zero action plan to the community to get input on the processes and the actions that will direct the city on actions to address traffic safety. The City of Sacramento takes traffic safety very seriously. And we are working very closely with multiple departments within the city to identify what factors are involved and what we can do to improve traffic safety in the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garrett. Oh, I think...
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanna thank you for your work. I know we've had a number of community outreach meetings. I attended the one in Oak Park. I think it's, this is really important. And we have lots of places across the city that are difficult. We have people who are speeding all over the place. And so I think we need a number of things and I hope this is a really large step in that process to identifying what we can do and really to doing a lot of outreach. I know that it's in here. I think we need to work with our schools. We need to work with our young people in the schools and their parents who are dropping them off. And we have some challenges there as well. So I just wanna thank you for the work and I look forward to participating as we move this forward.
Mr. Garrett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Shanear and Councilmember Hanson for their efforts and working. I think our city staff has gone on a much better approach. Last night, I was at a neighborhood association meeting and this conversation was brought up. Not so much also the fatality, but the fact that we have a lot of issues, such as on Broadway. We had, in my district, six fatalities, I think it was, in the last couple of years on bicycle-vehicle fatalities. And some of them just going to work. Clearly, there's an issue, one on infrastructure and what we have to do to redesign our roadways. We are encouraging people to look at multimodal transportation and walking and for multiple health benefits. But, you know, I think we need to be much more aggressive on the infrastructure side and how we can make those areas much more walkable and bike-friendly. And you even have now folks in the industrial area, like the Power and Alliance and folks out there who see that bicycle transportation is the only mode for folks out there and they have to navigate even bigger vehicles. Though what happened this last, this incident was a driver error as well. And we, I think we have to tackle that, too. I see so many people passing on the right and into bike lanes. And that's something that either through our traffic enforcement and our, also our, whatever we do in publication, we have to get at that, that, you know, making sure that we don't make, we educate drivers about the dangers of that quick second decision that can lead to somebody getting injured by passing on the right into a bike lane or a crosswalk.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I just wanted, and I assume that was maybe a motion?
Yes, that's a...
And a second, motion from Mr. Garrett and a second from Mr. Shanear. I just wanna say, Vision Zero is a complete transformation of how we see our roads. I know that Mr. Barone, our director, and all the staff have been working very hard to implement that philosophy. This plan with its outreach, its education, its infrastructure components, I think is a very, very good plan, especially because it helps us pull through on our complete streets planning, improve pedestrian crossing, obviously bike facilities, as were mentioned. But it doesn't fix driver inattentiveness and that, or driver impairment. That's one of the biggest causes right now of accidents. And I think we have to continue to push forward with the plan and the components of the plan. But the only other thing I wanna underscore is that right now, Public Works doesn't get money to do these kind of things. There's no money to build bike lanes or crosswalks and our resources are thin. So we're gonna have to do this with maintenance money unless we find another source. And I know that's something that we've been trying to figure out with state partners and some of our other agencies. But this is a valiant effort to help prevent things that have happened but also to make sure that we all treat each other fairly. So thank you for your hard work, you and your team. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thanks. Congratulations. All right. Madam Clerk, I think we're now on to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for item nine, if you want to read it.
Item nine is North Natomas Financing Plan 2017 Update Approving Nexus Study and Financing Plan Establishing New Impact Fee Amounts, Amending the North Natomas Development Agreement Standard Form and Amending Development Agreement 99-162 Regarding the Authorized Use of Development Fees.
Do you have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
I have two speakers on this item. Would you like them first?
No, let's have the quick staff presentation. We'll do that in council.
Good evening, Vice Mayors and Councilmembers. I am Sherri Smith with the Finance Department. The item before you this evening is the update to the North Natomas Finance Plan and Proposed Amendments to the North Natomas Development Agreements. In 1995, council adopted the North Natomas Finance Plan outlining a comprehensive strategy to finance over $3 billion worth of infrastructure. The finance plan was developed in partnership with the community, and the developers invested in the area. Over the past 23 years, that partnership has continued with the overall management of the finance plan to determine priorities based on development patterns and community priorities. The proposed update is an outcome of that same cooperative approach. Approval of the finance plan will update this evening. We'll reduce fees an average of 17% by removing funding for some facilities outlined in the staff report. It also shifts funding authority of a one-third share of a police station to the community center, as it is currently a community priority. Funding for the share of the police station can be reestablished with a future update when it's needed in the longer term. Approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement will permit the proposed changes to the finance plan, as the Development Agreement and the finance plan are intricately linked. Approval of the Second Amendment to the Standard Form Development Agreement will require uniform terms for future signatories. Staffer commends that upon conclusion of the public hearing, ordinance implementing the Development Agreement be approved and that the resolution approving the update and the amendment form agreement be adopted. We're available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our public comments?
The first speaker is David Begato and then Mac Elworthy.
Mr. Begato, welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Members of the City Council, David Begato with Allegheny Properties. Certainly, I'm here this evening in support of the item. We would like to thank Councilmember Ashby for her leadership on this. Her wonderful leadership, quite frankly, in reducing these fees is going to be a great benefit to the area in the City of Sacramento as it continues to make us more competitive, which will further encourage economic development. I'd also like to thank Sherri Smith, who just spoke, that worked very hard on this, and to a longtime person with a very institutional memory that's sitting in the audience, Mark Griffin, who's always there for the tricky questions that come up on this very expensive finance plan over the years and always takes my 20 questions when I call. So anyway, so thank you very much, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Begato. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Mac Worthy.
People, we, I don't oppose development, but we've got to understand some things. When your mayor out trying to bring a company in and you making a decision to raise fees, you can't sustain yourself that way. Where else can the type of company that your mayor's trying to persuade to come here can go other than North Natomas? What was the input of the community when you changed the direction of your fees? What was the input of the neighborhood? Nothing. People, these are the lies that you're going to have to zip up on sooner or later. That's a complete 82% all-white neighborhood, North Natomas. I was involved when the Winuti family brought the change here through the constructions of Kimball Inn. We know what went out there. But you can only sit here and raise fees and have a steady, the impact where a man get a few million dollars, he can't develop nothing out there because the fees are too high. But yet still, you're going to tell the public you want to persuade a big-time 500 company to come in here. They're going to run. You're going to give away $500,000 worth of property to a big-time company and raise fees in the north area. What are you saying to the public of Sacramento? We know we don't have the number of educated people here business. We know that. We know 90% of the people from 1960 up, when the government owned this town, only went to school to pass a test. Where were your business majors? Where were your accounting? I cut a beat in business law at night under Dr. Wade at American River Junior College, but I didn't know how to use the system. Go to school at night at 21-years-old, you can take anything that's on the calendar. You go in the daytime, you got to go through a process. My sister-in-law couldn't tell me because they was G.I.'s wise, was abhorred from the political and the economic process.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This item may seem somewhat bureaucratic and wonky and.
One of your specialties, refinancing districts. Save money.
These are really, really hard to do, really hard to do. And I inherited a huge finance plan that is very complicated, and when you talk about projects like the Centene project that came through, you have to be able to go back to finance plans like this and make changes to them to bring them up to speed, to really balance the need in that district for infrastructure, which North Natomas is unique in a lot of ways, and one of the ways is that they pay for the lion's share of their own infrastructure, fire stations, roads, over crossings. They do that by having this very robust finance plan. It is a delicate balance between charging too much in fees, making projects not pencil out, versus making enough money to offset general fund costs for North Natomas to be as self-sustaining as possible. It is a tricky nuance that really only exists right now in this part of the city, but when we get it right, we really get it right. And in this moment, it's very important to say thank you, even though this is just so bureaucratic, it's very hard to explain. Howard Chan being city manager at this moment is incredibly helpful. Fran Halbachan and John Dangberg critically important to this. And when we did things like keep, when you guys did things like help keep John on board a little bit longer, this is the type of thing he's fixing for us. Mark Griffin, who tried to retire, no way we sit here right now without him in the room. Absolutely none, zero way. It's not possible. And so all those things, jobs, 5,000 jobs from Centene, a couple thousand home permits, we're in a housing crisis, the bulk of the homes coming in are coming in in this district, all happening because back here in the city is Mark Griffin fixing this finance plan, making those projects affordable. Hector Barone sharpening his pencil in transportation because a lot of these projects are who's going to pay for the roads. And so some of you may have even gotten a letter from the county today saying, hey, we don't like this finance plan agreement because it puts some onus back on us on this one road. Yeah, that's right, because it's time for them to share in the cost of that road. Those are tough discussions that our city staff are having on a regional level to make sure that we're not overburdening the city's finances. John Blank, who is spearheading our effort around the community center and aquatic facility, has been at the front end of this because when you talk about how you pay for infrastructure, that is a $25 million project of which I have not asked for a single dollar from the city coffers. It is all district-specific. This is how you do it. You restructure a finance plan, and you have in mind the goals and purposes of that community, and you have strong partnerships, not just internally in the city. You have strong staff, like my chief of staff, Kevin Green, and you have relationships with the school district and North Natomas TMA and Becky Heike, who's here, and the developers. And what Dave Begato came up and said, and what Greg Thatch has provided in his office through this process, is you can't get to this point without them, without them in the mix, because they have to sign on to this. This is only half the city. Most of the funding is coming on their end, and it is really about us allocating back to that infrastructure. So this is a really important moment for Natomas, for our economic development, for the city, for jobs, for our whole region, for housing, for people that come to our region in the next few years. This is hard fought, and it took a couple of years to get this put in place and have all of the items lined up in a way that incentivizes development and yet holds responsible developers. And just one last thing I need to say is, it's important to understand whether it's public comment for items not on the agenda or public comment for items on the agenda. People are really able to say whatever they want at that podium. It doesn't make it true. It doesn't make it true. Somebody says the chief makes a certain amount, he doesn't. That's not true. Somebody says Natomas is all white, it's actually not true. Actually, this may surprise you, I represent the most diverse district in the City of Sacramento.
No, you don't. I do.
No, you don't. It's in the top 10 most diverse neighborhoods in the United States of America, and Natomas Unified School District is the number-one most diverse district in the country. So factually, it is the most diverse. 95834 is the most diverse zip code in our region and in the top 10 in the country. And the school district, that is primarily in my district and partially in Jeff Harris' and partially in Steve Hanson's, is the most diverse in the United States of America. So just because somebody comes to the podium and says that's where the white people live doesn't make it true. And I think that's really important today. The partners in this conversation represent a diversity of people, and the goals represented here are for everyone. These improvements are for everyone, at every age, their parks, their EMS, their medical services, their pools that teach kids how to swim. It's a joint-use project with the school. It helps businesses and it helps jobs. It's transportation, it's roads every one of you will drive on at some point in your life, and you live in Sacramento. So I think that's important to note. This is the wonky back end of the deal. Thank you to my partners in the city, who I've already named, and outside of the city, who make it possible. I would gladly like to open and close the public hearing and put this item up for a vote.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second from Mr. Garrett. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 10 is Proposed Fire Prevention Fee Adjustments.
I'd like to welcome our fire marshal, Mr. Jason Lee. Looks like you've got some backup. Chad. That might be a little too small for the camera. We might have to zoom in a bit.
Let's go to PowerPoint.
Oh, PowerPoint. There you go. That's better. Can read that.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm Jason Lee, Fire Marshal for the Fire Department. Tonight's presentation is on the proposed adjustments of the fire prevention fees for the Fire Department. The mission of the Fire Prevention Division is to improve the lives of city residents by preventing fires and reducing the impact of fires that occur. The last adjustment to the fire prevention fees was over eight years ago in 2010. The current fee adjustment, proposed fee adjustment, will help reduce the gap between the cost of providing the services and the actual revenues received. The current proposed fee adjustment is not a tax under Prop 26 due to exception two and three. This proposal does also include an annual review and a annual fee increase based upon the Consumer Price Index, provided the increase does not exceed the cost for services provided. In July of 2017, an outreach program started with community stakeholders, including local businesses and business associations, including the BIA Metro Chamber of Commerce and the Rental Housing Association. Four community town hall meetings were conducted in September of 2017. This proposal will also benefit the community by ensuring to provide resources to better serve the community, including faster review times, inspection scheduling for projects. Ultimately, this will ensure the community is meeting state and local mandated inspections, making our community safer. Staff recommends to pass a resolution for the approval of the fire prevention fees adjustments. I'm available for any questions.
All right, do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I have no speakers on this item.
It doesn't look like we have any council member comment at this point. We have a motion from Mr. Shenier, a second from Ms. Ashby. Oh, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
There you go.
Excuse me, I mean, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. I was, when I saw the, you know, the request for a fee increase, I had some questions, particularly in light of the issue around affordable housing and how this is going to impact that. So, you know, my question or my concern is just that, you know, if this is the right time. And I would assume that, you know, and I don't want to make an assumption, but you're bringing the request forward in the Fire Department, and so what I'd really like to know is where, I mean, these funds are going to be held by the Police Department and then administered, I mean, excuse me, by the Fire Department and then administered by the Fire Department?
No, that's not correct. The fees will go back into the general fund.
They'd come right back to the general fund, but for the purpose of, well, if they come into the general fund, then that would be at the council's discretion then as to how they're allocated?
I believe it's to offset the cost of the Fire Department's inspections of these buildings.
Well, they're in an isolated account.
It's a Prop 218 issue, right, Mr. City Attorney?
It's Prop 26, yes.
26, different prop.
Well, I guess the question then would be, so if they, are they coming into the general fund, or are they in an isolated account designated for a specific purpose?
We'll defer that to Laney or City Attorney, but I believe they have to be segregated in order to fund the activity that they're meant for.
Yes, that's correct. Councilmember Warren and Vice Mayor, under Prop 26, the fees to be collected or to be used and go back into the program for which they're charged.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Warren?
It does. It just, I'm just still a little concerned about how we get to a place where, and we prioritize, you know, how we bring affordable housing to market when, you know, we have needs, obviously, and we want to address those needs, but again, we have this ongoing layer of fee increases, you know, in addition to the cost of labor and land and all the other things that go into creating housing. And I think we've heard the cry very loud, you know, about the lack of affordable housing. So I just want to caution the council about this, you know, this escalation of fees when we're kind of swimming upstream against an issue that might even be a much bigger issue, and that's, you know, housing, folks in our city, when I think we're having a real problem. So I'm going to support the item, but I'm, but my, I just wanted to express my caution to the council.
And after Ms. Ashby, I'll say something about the process, because there was a lot of back and forth on it. Ms. Ashby?
Yeah, we may be saying the same thing, Vice Mayor, but I appreciate the comments, and I just wanted to point out, I can't remember, I think it happened at budget and audit, so you're not on that committee, but we did, the Rental Housing Association did come forward and ask some of the same points that you're asking, and I want to thank our fire marshal and Jim Lofgren and the folks at RHA, because they did meet. They had several meetings, and they, you will notice Rental Housing is not here to oppose tonight, and that is in large part due to the fact that those same questions were addressed by the fire marshal in those conversations. So thank you for taking those meetings, and to Jim and RHA and those folks, thank you for engaging. It's a, it's a better process and a better outcome because of their input.
Thank you, Ms. Ashby. The only thing I wanted to add, and did somebody make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second from, sorry, I forgot. The only thing I wanted to add is, you took a lot of feedback in this process. We hadn't adjusted fees in many, many years, and they no longer met the cost-recovery threshold. And even though we're slowly working to get there, this is a, is an important step, it's sort of moderating that and getting us over a period of time in the right place. So thank you for all your hard work. I know you did a lot of conversations, a lot of outreach to the business community and the development community, and I think you got to a good place. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 11 is Fiscal Year 2016/17 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFR.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Oswaldo Lopez. I am the interim accounting manager for the city, and today I'm presenting the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR. I just want to show it right here. The CAFR contains the audit financial statements that are required by the city charter as well as state and federal law. The CAFR present the city's financial conditions and the results of activities for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. We prepared the CAFR, consisted with general accepted accounting principles for governmental, for local governments, which are established by the government. of these standards had a material impact for the city. The independent CPA firm, Babrinet, Tree, Day &amp; Company, BTD, have audited their financial statements. And tonight, David Cho Water and James Ramsey from BTD are here, just in case that you have any questions after the presentation. I'm pleased to report that we receive a clean audit, which means that we receive a modified opinion from the auditors. We're also proud that the city has been awarded the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officer Association for the 28th year in a row. The certificate result from a peer review of the CAFR and recognize that the city are following the highest standard for local government financial reporting. Along with the CAFR, there is an additional document in the staff report, which is the auditor's letter to City Council. This letter is the required communication from the auditors and indicates that the auditors had no difficulties in performing the audit, as well as the fact that there were no disagreements with management. This letter also discusses significant estimates and disclosures that are in the CAFR. The CAFR, in combination with the staff report, provide a connection between the year-end financial results and the budget plan, with recommendation for the results included in the mid-year budget report. So this table is included in the staff report, is the first table that you have. This is the general fund result, and it basically shows that the general fund had a positive result of 12.9 million during the year. The variance for the results are included here, and I'm just going to go over a few of them. For example, mayor tax revenue, as you can see there, had a positive budget variance of 5.9 million. The department operations also had a positive variance compared to the budget of 9.1 million. This table also illustrates that consistent with adopted council policies, we have made some restrictions. For example, 2.7 million in unbudgeted revenue from the county auto sale tax sharing agreement was transferred to the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. This bring the reserve to 49.6 million, which represent 10.7% of the fiscal year 2017-18 general fund budget revenue. Also, 1.4 million had been reserved for the Fire Department, and this is related to the emergency medical transportation and intergovernmental transfer revenue for ambulance service reimbursement. And 5.3 million in pension cost saving associated with the vacancies will be transferred to the other post-employment benefit trust. By adding this 5.3 million to that trust, the assets will increase from 24 million to 29 million, and this represent a change in the funding status from 6.6% to 8% based on the current other post-employment liability that we have of 363 million. The mid-year budget report will go into additional detail on the 12.9 million in unassigned fund balance. Finally, I would like to take a moment to recognize the fiscal staff of all the city's department for the good work closing the books for the fiscal year June 30, 2017, and helping the city to get another clean audit opinion. In especial, I want to say thank you to the staff in the accounting division for all the hard work, the hard work and the long hours to finish the CAFR in time. With that, I would recommend that the City Council approve this resolution to approve the fiscal year 2017 CAFR and accept the auditor's letter. This conclude my presentation, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I don't see any council members punch up to speak. Does anybody? And we have one speaker. Okay, let's do the public comment.
Thank you. Speaker on this item is Mac Worthy.
Mr. Worthy, this is number three.
You know, this should be the era that you have 300 people in here to speak to. You have one, two, three women here is fantastic, accounting area. I find out new treasure is all right, boy, too. Now, don't ask the questions. Now, we look at things that, all the other stuff you put there, that's rhetoric, because you're a nonprofit organization. The main thing is your property tax, your sales tax, and the use of utilities. When we look at the use of utilities, we think about Smer. That's where we ask for audit on where is Smer's money going. That's the thing. We want to know how much go to labor and how much go to repair. That would show you a lot of things about this city. Now, we understand Smer Tech, and we understand this is part of the budget. There was a budget here in the South Area, and three city councils showed up, and only 26 people. This lady was there. Where were the other people in the neighborhood? That was the council's responsibility, to educate those people and get them out there. We could go in here and ask with two or three pieces of paper, and they could tell us everything. All that stack of stuff, that mean nothing to people to understand where your money go. The itemized status, you know you split with the county, but we understand with the property that you bought here. You bought that property off the banks with taxpayers' money. If you had elected banks to have it, somebody would have been paying tax on it. We want to know how many million dollars we lost by you buying that tax, and it becomes nonprofit. Those are things that people should be coming here talking about. But due to the circumstances of the neighborhoods that don't have the education in the business world, you can go to college, but still you can't ask the question that pertaining to profit and loss.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
You better do something, boy.
Thank you. Your time is up.
The swamp gonna be raining, and you gonna be a part of it.
All right, I don't see any council members punch up to speak. We have a motion from Mr. Carr, a second from Mr. Jennings. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Next time, we want more money in the mid-year. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item is number 12, fiscal year FY 2017-2018 mid-year report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Dawn Holm, and I'm the interim Director of Finance. The item before you tonight is the FY 2017-18 mid-year budget review. With half of the fiscal year behind us, we have reviewed revenues and are recommending a slight adjustment to four of our general fund revenue categories as reflected in this slide. Based on the revenues we've received to date, we are recommending increasing the revenue budget for these categories by almost $6 million, or 5% of the total general fund revenue budget. All other major general fund revenues are tracking with budget, and no changes are Mid-year is a time to review where departments are relative to revenues and expenditures and address critical needs that can't wait until the next fiscal year. The fiscal year 2017-18 approved budget included allocations for the Beacon School and Neighborhood Community and Economic Plan projects, but they were not budgeted in multi-year projects at that time. We're recommending that these projects be established for the continued work on these efforts, so that the funds don't fall to fund balance at the end of the year. Additionally, based on council direction over the past several months, we're recommending a project be established for the cannabis equity program with an initial $500,000 budget. Future funding for this program will be funded from revenues received from cannabis-related businesses. We are recommending nine positions be added to the general fund. These positions will result in no increased cost to the general fund, as they are being offset through grants, revenues, and other department expenditure realignments. One position in the city attorney's office will be focusing on the increasing Public Records Act requests. We're adding two in the finance department, one to work on the city's whole person care program, and the other to address the increasing workload in our accounts payable division. And then we're adding, recommending six positions in animal care. As you know, with population increase, our animal shelters ever challenged to address the ongoing needs at the shelter, and so we're recommending the addition of six positions to help out at the shelter. In our other funds, we also need to make some minor adjustments. The police department had savings in Measure U during the prior fiscal year of approximately $1 million. They have requested that they be able to use these savings for the purchase of ballistic shield doors for their vehicles and to address important infrastructure, IT infrastructure. This request does not affect the Measure U forecast, as the forecast had already assumed these funds would be fully spent. A museum registrar is being proposed to be added to our Center for Sacramento History, and this position will be funded by an endowment. The other adjustments recommended are necessary to address increasing maintenance costs and realign budgets between the various funds. As you know, the Measure U tax is set to expire in March of 2019. As reflected in this forecast, we are projecting to have fund balance to see us through the next fiscal year and partially into fiscal year 1920. Given increasing labor costs, we will be recommending moving a few things from Measure U to the general fund in the fiscal year 1819 proposed budget, as we've done over the past couple of years, to ensure that ongoing expenditures remain below ongoing revenues. The general fund forecast has been updated to include the $6 million revenue increase and the 12.9 million in resources available at the end of fiscal year 1617, as Osvaldo just explained. This forecast before you does not include the potential loss of Measure U, and we will provide that with the next budget. With the items we have discussed, we are projecting a positive year-end general fund balance of almost $6.8 million. Unfortunately, increasing labor costs will have expenditures exceeding revenues again beginning in fiscal year 2018-19. And while we have settled with the majority of our employee organizations, we still have two contracts set to expire in June. The approved budget includes a $5 million set aside to stress future pension increases, which will help in balancing the next budget. And we're recommending that the transfers authorized in the CAFR to the Economic Uncertainty Reserve and OPEB be delayed until council adopts the 19 budget, to ensure that we have adequate resources as we bring that forward to you in May. I'm honored to work with such an amazing team on the budget, and would like to thank the department staff, the city manager, his assistant city managers, the budget office, and especially our interim budget manager, Marion Fahey, for all the work that went into getting the mid-year review completed. With that, I would ask that you approve the mid-year budget, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holm. Mr. Worthy, you're the only public commenter. Why don't we take your comments, and then we'll go to the council.
It's to the people that lives in this city learn something. Now, this is estimation-projection to what's here to be asked. Where is we going to use earmark in the next projection? Because we have some situations here of infrastructure that have gathered bond zone, and we want to know before Trump send his money out for the infrastructure. Somebody be double-dipping. Where the change gonna be? Now, the fellow government gonna give you money, but what you gonna do with the bond money? Those are the questions be asked. These ladies, they can't tell you, that's y'all. But you not gonna be transparent and talk to the neighborhood about that. That's where you should get out there and talk to the neighborhood. Now, you got money here, let's earmark some of this money, that the government gonna come back. I'm gonna send a kite out and let them know that you sold bonds here. Go right out to the capital and talk to the boys over there, trying to meet with their caucus. What you gonna do about this money that you already got in bonds? And we looking at the stock market where that's a rich boy's playground, it has to level itself back off. Cal Pertz is saying you're not gonna get what you say you's gonna get. So why will you decrease your deficit? Think about it. It's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. I don't see any council members punched up to speak. Looks like Councilmember Schneer.
So, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll be brief. We heard this at budget and audit, had a pretty robust conversation about it there. I guess, thank you, Dawn and Marion, I appreciate all the work on it. As Mr. Hanson said about your previous comment, I wish you could have brought more money. I think the bottom line here is we're at basically a balanced budget. I know that there's a couple of contracts still out, and that'll happen hopefully fairly soon. I will note that your 249,000 surplus at the end of the year does not include any new dollars from cannabis, and we hope to find some new dollars there, both through the BOT and additional sales tax. I'm hoping that within a couple of months, we can make some guestimates about that. I did talk to a couple of the dispensaries, and what I heard was 25% to 35% increase in their sales in January. We don't know if that'll hold or how it will go, but it's some amount of money, and we can take the BOT and then hopefully create some estimates around the sales tax. I know we need to be very conservative around this budget. It's unfortunate that we can't do new things, but I think we have a lot going on in the city. It's still an exciting time, and as we continue to grow our budget and talk about, grow our economy and talk about the budget for next year, I just want to put a couple of little placeholders in if we can, if things do materialize. I want to note the creative economy grants that we put aside as a council, $500,000. And I believe we had 7.2 million in requests, something like that, which is a real neighborhood stimulant as far as the economy goes. And I know that was across the board that funds have gone out for that. So that's an important one. I know also, as we've really tried to get our young people working over the summer, we had somewhere around 800 or 900 jobs between the mayor's 1,000-strong program, somewhere at City Hall, our landscaping and lighting district, just putting more young people to work, which is a benefit to the city as well. I also want to note that we need to continue talking about homelessness and what we're going to do with the shelter after April, when it's...
End of March.
End of March, rather, so in April and beyond, between the time that this shelter closes or not, if we choose to have that discussion, and when the permanent triage center will be open. I think that's a really critical piece for us to take a look at. So those are three, I think, small things, but that can carry a large consequence if we don't do them right. So I just want to put kind of pins in those for when we do have the larger budget discussion. Thanks.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Harris. We have a second from that end of the dais. Everyone, I think, seconded at the same time. I know it was Mr. Carr's joking. I just want to say a couple of things real quick. One is I think that if we don't start finding ways to generate more revenue, everybody will need to be visiting those recreational dispensaries to help with our feelings. Right, Mr. Schneer? Is that what you were trying to say? I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. One is I know the cannabis equity program is in this forecast, and it's really important, but I assume that's going to get paid back from the revenues from that program? Is that correct? Okay. And then I heard that we'll start to see those revenues in at the end of this month to begin to forecast for the next year's budget?
So the way the cannabis revenues work is they pay in the rears. So at the end of February, we will know the first month of cannabis revenues. And in March, we're developing for adult use and for the change. So by the time we're building the budget, we may not know. It may be something we have to bring back when we're doing the budget hearings and maybe make an adjustment. We won't have enough data when we're building the budget to actually do a forecast.
No, no, I understand that, but one of the things I wondered is that target's gonna move as we get data, but the first data is not till the end of this month. And then over subsequent months, we'll know more, right?
Well, we actually won't know the January revenues until the end of March. They pay in the rears, so.
Okay.
In January, they're paying for December. February, they're paying for January. And as you know, it's a cash business.
And the updated property tax rolls won't be available till the end of March as well.
Correct.
So that's a very important timeframe, especially because we've accelerated the budget process. So we may be mid-budget process by the time we start talking about those items. So because of that, I just wanted to focus on a couple of things that Councilmember Schneer said. One is we have a tremendous housing shortage going on in the community, and I did ask at a previous hearing that we look at some help for renters through Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I know that we don't have the resources in the mid-year to do that, but also we've looked at how to get needles picked up, how to employ people who are homeless to help clean up some of the neighborhoods that impacts are on. And we have this issue of bathrooms that was mentioned earlier tonight. Those are all things that are sort of present demands. And as we get into the budget, Mr. City Manager, you know, those aren't going to be like the labor contracts, which here have a 12 to 18 million dollar forecast now, even though they're two out. But those things are really meaningful in the community. And so how we figure that out is a big question. And I know the council's struggling to both grow but also be fiscally responsible, and I want to thank you, Dawn, and your whole team, and the person who used to be in your role, who still has a big role in the process. But thank you for the work. But thank you for the work. Certainly paints a picture that is colorful with red and black. We prefer just black. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. All right, last item. Do we have any clerk appointments, Madam Clerk?
I do not have any appointments to announce this evening.
Councilmember comments, reports, AB 1234 reports. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The Gardenlands Northgate Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, February 8th, at 6:30 PM at Stanford Settlement, which is 450 West El Camino Avenue. And this Saturday, there will be knee-sack chamber ribbon cutting for the new tap house called Sack Yard at 1725 33rd Street. I went there the other night for their soft opening, and it's quite a beautiful space, and a lot of people were there having a great time. This brings District 3's brewery count to seven, so I think I've got you all beat. Anyway, I hope to see you there.
Know about that. All right. Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We did have our policy ad hoc committee last week, and there was quite a bit of discussion on the technicalities of implementing governance with the city. We decided to have another meeting with the mayor to make sure that we were headed in the direction that he wanted to go in, and we distributed manuals to everyone on the council and all the direct reports, asking if anyone had any issues or concerns, and we didn't receive any feedback. And so, we want to make sure that the council is on board, the mayor's on board, as we just start developing these policies, bringing them forward, that we won't get into discussion on are we doing what we really wanted to do. So, we have three or four policies developed that we'll start working on again, and it may, some members of the ad hoc wanted to have a workshop to brief all of the members of the council on the governance process. And so, I'd like your thoughts on having a workshop. It'd probably be at least a half a day affair, if not a whole day affair, and if you could let the city clerk know if you're interested in doing that, we would appreciate it. And if you would take a look at that manual, and if you have any issues, would you please forward your comments to the city clerk, so that we can get them addressed?
Thank you. Anything else from you, Mr. Carr? No? Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to talk about inoperable vehicles, our ordinance as it relates to that. I'm asking assistance with a proposed change in the ordinance regarding inoperable vehicles on private property. Our current ordinance fails in that it does not require that the owner demonstrate the operability of the vehicle. So, owners don't have to do that. And a simple way to demonstrate operability would be that you require the owner to at least start the car and move it one or two feet. In addition, the ordinance should require that the vehicle be registered with the DMV, and once it's registered, it can be registered with current tags or in a non-operation status. So, I'm asking the city manager, city attorney, and the code enforcement to look into this issue and to come back with proposed changes to that particular ordinance. We have a big problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. We'll add that to the law and legislation log for follow-up.
Thank you. And then our announcements, I want to first congratulate Jordan Davis. He's a student at John F. Kennedy, and he's being recognized by the Sacramento Kings as part of this month's Black History Community Awards Program, and so we want to congratulate him on that. This Thursday, February 8th, we have City Hall in your neighborhood. It's gonna take place at Prairie Elementary School. This is an opportunity to come to the community in order to get all of your needs met, offer suggestions, and get your questions answered. We have a free concert on Saturday, February 10th. It's at the Robbie Waters Library, and it begins at 3:30 PM. You can enjoy a free concert with Mersanaka. It's a quartet and a quintet, and I hope I pronounced it right, and they play various contemporary and classical pieces arranged by District 7's very own Andy Tan. Also, on Sunday, the 11th, Sunday Jazz with BTU Arts. It's going to take place at the Elks Lodge, number 6, from 12 to 5 PM. It's a Sunday Jazz with Traditional Jazz Society, and they'll feature artists, one of the great artists, our youth are actually performing in this. They're bigger than arts, bigger than us arts. And then I want to end with a big thank you for all those that participated in past Saturday's Healthy Family Day. We had a lot of organizations out there, just incredible organizations that participated in Healthy Day, a lot of education, a lot of parents showed up, a lot of kids showed up. It was a great day, and I want to thank everybody that showed up for that.
Wonderful. Mr. Guerra.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Have an AB 123 full report to give out. We both participated in the new Partners of Smart Growth through the Local Government Commission. Thank you for your leadership in the Local Government Commission, Mr. Vice Mayor. And I think timely it was that we were talking about the efforts that cities and other regions are doing to look at smart growth, transit, different walking options, and how to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. I think today, I mean, it was unfortunately the conversation about what happened recently, but one thing that came out was that Sacramento is leading the way on looking at these efforts to make sure that we provide walkable and bikeable communities, and also great ideas on placed-based economic development, so more to come on that. And also, I've got a couple of announcements here. One, the Little Saigon Lunar Flower Festival is gonna be this February 10th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Hiram Johnson High School. Come celebrate the Lunar New Year with the Chinese New Year Cultural Association as we ring in the new year. Enjoy dragon dancing, martial arts, cultural entertainment, community exhibits, arts and crafts, food, and vendors, and family, and friends, and a lot of games. Also, the Mayor Steinberg, and I think Councilmember Shenier and I, will be at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative on Wednesday, February 21st, for the Project Prosper discussion. I think our city manager's going to be there, too, to get more community dialogue on about how do we improve our neighborhoods, and how do we look at improving our economic activity in neighborhood-based efforts. And with that, that's all I have to report. Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Mr. Shenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Two quick announcements. This Thursday, I'll be doing office hours at a touch of class at 4217 Stockton Boulevard, 5:30 to about 7:00. And then Friday night, peace walk again this week. We'll start at City Church in Oak Park. It's 5:00.
Thank you, and I only have one comment, which is an AB 1234 report, consistent with Mr. Guerra's.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned. Have a good night.